I'd like to call the meeting, the Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, to order. Would you please all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Tuckfield is absent and excused. Mr. Provinzano?
Here.
Mr. Shudo?
Here.
Mr. Spatafora?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Bentley, present.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, at this time I'd like to make a motion to exclude a member of Tuckfield from any and all roll call votes.
Second.
Motion to exclude Mr. Tuckfield by Mr. Shudo, seconded by Mr. Bentley. All in favor? Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of previous meeting minutes. Any discussion? And then do we have a motion?
If there's no objection.
Motion by Mr. Bentley.
Okay, I support it.
And supported by Mr. Shudo. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Any corrections? Any deletions?
Mr. Chair, for item number 6A, this may be a correction, and that's just looking at the underlying documents. The petitioner's last name may be misspelled according to a letter in the underlying documents that he wrote. His last name should be spelled N-E-G-E-N-D-A-N-K. Eliminate the "I" on the end.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Do we have a motion with that correction?
With that correction, I'll move that we approve tonight's agenda as presented.
All right. Motion with that correction by Mr. Spatafora?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. New business. Permanent parcel 08-33-400-045, located on the north side of Hall Road, a half a mile east of Romeo Plank Road, Section 33, Michael N. I'm not sure I can pronounce your name, and I don't want to butcher it. Petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. This item, as you mentioned, is on the north side of Hall Road, a half mile east of Romeo Plank, in Section 33 of the township. What's before you this evening is a special land use for the purpose of Life Yoga, a yoga studio. The parcel is currently zoned C2, general commercial, and the special land use would apply for this type of use. Things that we look at here, I think we've been through these a number of times for other special land uses, but that they're in a like business area. They're commercial. It's compatible with the other businesses there. It's a multi-unit facility, and it will... So they have parking requirements for one space per three persons allowed at maximum occupancy. No structural changes are proposed as part of this request. There's no effect upon the building or structures. The use, again, relates harmoniously with the surrounding area, and the business will be available for the public to use. The proposed use has no impact on public health, safety, and welfare from a zoning perspective, and it's not anticipated to be detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood. Seeing that they've followed those, the one item that had been outstanding is that they needed to supply class size and hours of operation in order to clarify the parking, that they had enough parking. I was able to obtain their class schedule. There's no overlap. They actually build in some time in between classes, so vehicles can leave from one class before the next class arrives, as well as I was able to find a number of images of their current facility, and it appears about 12 to 15 students per class. So if we do the parking calculations, one space per three at maximum load, they would need roughly six spaces once you count the instructor, and I think they have more than enough parking to handle that at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Box. Is a petitioner here? No petitioner?
Please come up to the desk there. Please state your name and address for us, and then... Have a seat, sir. Please sit down.
So they can hear you on the... We gotta hear you on the mic.
Good evening. Dino Scholz. I'm the landlord, property owner of that location. We're Macomb Township.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
Well, other than I think it's a wonderful fit for the location, and, you know, we're just trying to promote business in the community, so there's no problem, I don't think, so...
Okay. Mr. Box, have we decided on the time, or do we have the times of the operation?
As far as this facility, it appears that they're moving from a different facility, from Clinton Township, and that facility, based on what they have, assuming they're going to follow a similar schedule, it looks like their earliest class is at 9:00 a.m., and their latest class is 6:15 p.m. that ends at 7:15.
Okay. Sir, would you agree with that? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's accurate.
Okay. All right. Anything else you want to add?
No, I don't think it's necessary.
Mr. Box, anything else?
Nope.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Mr. Bentley?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I had one question, and I would assume that you know, but are they occupying the whole building, or which section of the building will they be occupying?
The existing building's 25,000 square feet. Sargent currently occupies about 12,000 of that. There's 3,200 square feet available to this locat... for this yoga studio. That's what they're going to be utilizing.
And where is that on this plan?
Okay, so that if Sargent's is to the extreme west, the next two units, which would be basically 40 by 80, or they're typically 20 by 80, but in this situation, he's taking two, so it's 40 by 80. So Sargent's being the largest to the left, so it's adjacent to Sargent Appliance, so it's between Pizza Hut and Sargent.
Okay. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Mr. Spatafora?
Well, Mr. Bentley asked, and the first question I was going to ask, and it was answered. Good evening, Mr. Scholz.
Good evening, thank you.
My question for you, has the business, Life Yoga LLC, have they signed a lease with you or your holding company as the landlord of that premises yet?
They have.
They have. Okay. And the conditions as far as hours of operation and parking, I believe our planning department director had answered those, and to the best of your knowledge, again, just to repeat, 9:00 a.m. to approximately 7:30 p.m. on a daily basis, if you know?
I don't know. I don't know the, you know, as far as a daily basis goes, I don't think that they're... I can't answer that question because I don't know exactly what they're doing with their timeframe.
Would you happen to know, since the underlying documents show site plan, that they had two classrooms, I believe, that they wanted to have a build-out and a design for?
That's correct. That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Do you know if those two classrooms would be occupied simultaneously, which could almost double, you know, the size of students?
I think that's the reason we're here, is the fact that there's potential for the two classes. I mean, two different uses entirely. The two classrooms are significantly different in size and conception as far as how they're utilizing them, so I think they could possibly be done simultaneously, but I think this parking situation is satisfied well beyond that regardless.
Well, for the entire premises, yeah, I can see that with the map. Would you happen to know, I realize that the applicant is not here, but would you happen to know as far as what type of classes? One, I assume, is a yoga. Is the other room going to be used for something different?
It's a variation thereof, so to speak. So one of them has some kind of hanging sling situation where they have an open ceiling kind of configuration, and the other one's more typical. So I think, you know, what he's trying to do is basically, you know, move some of this, you know, maybe something a little more upscale, so to speak, into Macomb Township that may, you know, be coming out of, you know, the west or California, Chicago kind of a thing. So it's kind of, he's doing a wonderful job. He's got a great plan. He's, you know, he's excited to do it. He's experienced in business, so, you know, we're grateful to have him.
And to your knowledge, are they closing the facility in Clinton Township to move to your location?
I understand that is the case.
Okay. And, Mr. Box, to you, you indicated that they have another facility. Was it the one in Clinton Township?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. And what I obtained was that they're moving from that location to this location, so that one will be closed.
Okay. And I take at this location, the size and the square footage is larger for the business?
Significantly, over double.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
No, my pleasure. Thank you.
One quick question to the landowner. Does your tenants intend on having any competitive style events where they draw in a lot of people?
I don't think that's the nature of that business, to be honest with you. I can't answer that.
Generally, it's not, but...
Yeah, I'm not... He certainly hasn't divulged that to me as far as anything like that, and obviously, you'd have to clear that with us as far as the property owners, as far as, you know, any kind of events on premise.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm done. Thank you. Mr. Box, we mentioned that the parking is probably sufficient, but when you add in the other businesses?
It's still... It would still be sufficient, yes.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
One other question, Mr. Box. Is that 12 to 15, is that for one class or both?
That would be for one class, so six would be the requirement per class, and if they're having two, so then roughly 12 spaces, 11 or 12, which I think they more than have capacity for at this time.
Okay, yeah. They do confirm on their August 18th letter that both classrooms would run concurrently, or that would be their thoughts, anyway. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commission... Anything else?
Mr. Box, regarding question of Ms. Clancy about the class size and the hours of operation, you're satisfied?
Yeah, we confirm that since the time she wrote that letter. Yep.
Okay, we heard about the parking. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Well, at this time, I'd like to open it to the public, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shudo?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Provinzano. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. As we open the public hearing for Life Yoga, any person wishing to speak will be recognized and will be asked to give their name and address before speaking. We ask that all speakers limit their comments to four minutes. Once the public portion is closed, we will not recognize any other or any further discussion or comments from the community. Is there anyone in the community that'd like to speak about Life Yoga? Anyone? All right. And I did forget to mention that we opened it at 6:42.
Yes.
So if there's no one, are we sure? Nobody? Okay. Then at this time, at 6:43, I guess we need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Do we have a motion on this item? From the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, if there's no further discussion, based on the presentation from our planning department and the satisfactory answers to questions from the applicant's landlord, at least in my view, I will make a motion to recommend the special land use for Life Yoga. For approval, permanent parcel number 08-33-400-045.
Okay. Motion from Mr. Spatafora?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Provinzano. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Sir.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Provinzano?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay. And motion passes unanimously. Let's move on to item B. Rezoning, mass rezoning, residential one-family suburban.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, did you say you two?
I did say yes.
No, but I'm talking about Mr. Richard. He was reading everything that he said. I'm just asking.
Did I say what?
Yes.
Yes.
He voted yes.
Oh, he did vote yes? I didn't hear.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thought you forgot.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Sorry.
All right. Let's move on to the next item. Rezoning, mass rezoning, residential one-family suburban R1S to residential one-family R1, located in parts of Section 2, Section 4, Section 6, Section 18, Macomb Township petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. I know you, as a commissioner, have been through this a few times already, but I'll explain it again for those in the public this evening. So what the township is doing, as you mentioned, we are rezoning R1S. So if you look at the map here that lists our zoning categories, essentially what we're doing is getting rid of one category. This is something that we're cleaning up that should have taken place back when the 2008 master plan was approved, and it's starting to cause some issues, so we're cleaning it up now at this time. Again, the ordinance does not match the master plan as it's currently written. It doesn't match the 2008 master plan, and it won't match the Cultivate Macomb master plan that we're currently working on. R1S has a minimum requirement of 30,000 square feet per lot, which is roughly 1.45 acre or units per acre. The lowest density, according to the master plan, is two units per acre, so it puts the township in a position where it might be liable for litigation if somebody were to attempt to get two units per acre, and the ordinance doesn't match that, so we're getting rid of R1S again to match the two, to make them harmonious with one another. So as I mentioned, you guys have all sat through this. We're doing this in six phases. The first four, this is the phase three today, the first four phases are all R1S to R1. Phases five and phases six, as you see on the map, they're kind of color-coded, the different phases. Phases five and six will be R1S to something more appropriate other than R1, based on current use. So for phase three, there's four different sections that are in this group this evening, Section 6, 4, 18, and Section 2. These are largely already individual residential properties, so as far as the use, nothing is changing. What this change will do, again, it will match the ordinance with the master plan. The R1 category does allow slightly larger density, three units per acre, rather than either 1.45 or two. It's going to reduce the street frontage required to build a home from 100 feet down to 70 feet, but owners can continue living as is. I know we've gotten lots of calls and questions about things that, you know, if you have, R1S allows, you know, things like chickens in your backyard. If you have that already, they will be grandfathered in. You can continue using or having your chickens in your backyard. We have worked with assessing and confirmed this is not going to affect taxes. It's based on use. It's already being used as residential. We're also, there are a few parcels around the township that are split zoned that contain some part of R1S. This will rezone all, the entire parcel, so it's, not only is it removing the R1S, we're getting rid of some split-zone parcels that have been a problem as well. And this will not prevent the landowners from seeking a different land use or a different zoning category in the future. So if down the road, a landowner has a larger piece that's been rezoned to R1 in this process, and they wish to come in and rezone it something else, they have the right to seek that rezoning. And at this time, the staff does recommend approval of all the parcels within phase three to be rezoned.
Okay. So nothing really changes, other than a technical go from R1 to R1S?
For the most part.
Is it the same?
There's a few minor things. Like I said, the road frontage requirement to build a property gets a little smaller, and because of that, the density goes up a little bit. Where someone to, you know, split their property up, they could, if they had a one-acre unit, for example, you could get three properties in there now as opposed to one and a half before.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I have one question.
Sure.
As I was looking at the plan and the locations in Section 6, the north-west corner, would that, or should that be left alone, or change to R1 if that in the future ever needed to become commercial or some other more involved?
Well, I guess the intent is to get rid of R1S, so we don't want to leave it alone, as you say. We want to rezone it to something, and at this time, the vast majority of those parcels already have a single-family home on them, so R1 makes the most sense. Now, where somebody to collect, you know, start buying up multiple pieces and want to parcel them together and create a commercial shopping center or something, they would have the right to seek rezoning at that time.
Yeah, and there's nothing to preclude that from having.
Correct.
Okay. Just a confirmation. Thank you.
Got you. Anyone else? Well, then at this time, I'd like to open it to the public at 6:50.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bentley?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Provinzano. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Okay. So if you would like to address the planning commission on this rezoning, you are invited to come up to the podium, and please state your name and address, and remember, you have four minutes. Is there anyone that would like to talk about the rezoning?
I have a question.
Well, come on up here, sir, and we take all of your questions and comments.
On the podium, please.
Nope, on the podium, sir. Up there, please. Yeah. You're new at it. It's okay.
Yes, I am, actually. My name is Jordan Galasca. I own two parcels in Zone 2.
I need your address, please, Jordan.
224-6026-MILE.
Thank you.
And 224-6326-MILE.
Got you.
Does this mean that we will be able to get water from the fire hydrant that is directly adjacent to my property there on the far west side, or is that something we're going to have to wait around for until they go all the way to North Avenue?
Okay. Again, all these questions are, we'll address them at the end, so that's question one. Got you.
Really, I mean, there's a school across the street. I've owned the property for 20-plus years, and there's a fire hydrant right next door to my property, and when I called the zoning board, they said that unless I developed the whole eight acres, I would not have access to that water. So I have two houses right there, right next to the fire hydrant that goes across to the school endeavor across the street, and I'm just wondering how and when, if I can get tapped into that.
Okay.
For at least the two properties I have now.
Got you. All right. At the end, we'll talk about...
That's it. Those are the two questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
All right. My name's Larry Conrad. I live at 55739 Broughton Road, and two acres. We're in Section 4, right about the middle of the picture up there, the two-acre lots. My question is more, I understand what you're trying to do, clean up the zoning stuff, but just say, for instance, I've been here since '94. Now, just say one of the residents on the street decides, well, hey, I can, I got two acres. I can take down my house, and they can put in three to six houses on two acres, because, you know, and that would be okay with the zoning? What I mean, it's just, I don't know how that would work, and I'm just putting that out there, because I'm kind of confused how they can jam houses. If somebody just decides, well, hell, I can make, excuse me, we can make some money here. Let me get rid of these. I get rid of my old house, then re-divide the property to six houses. I mean, that's basically what you're saying they can do. It's just a question. If anybody has an answer, or I appreciate it.
Yeah.
You can give an answer now, or...
At the end.
Should I wait?
No, no. We do it at the end after everybody's spoken.
You have a question, may I have?
Yeah. Good. Thank you, sir.
Hi. I'm Narina Watkins, 55767 Broughton Road, almost second to last strip there before the gas line, and same concern. First off, we are technically a subdivision with two ordinances that you need two acres to build, and it must be no less than 1,100 square feet, and that's how I want it to stay. That's why I decided to build there. My family's owned that property for many years. The farmer who owned the land set it up that way to protect it, so there could be these beautiful big oak trees, not for them to clear it down. And then also, the subdivision they developed behind us has a very large area that they got the tax break for keeping the swamps. There's so many little animals, rare insects. I know when we built, D and I also had bat cages, and they'd do studies for rare things they'd find there. They don't do it anymore, but it does change. Just because you're trying to line it up with the master plan, that's just a plan. The rest of us are dealing with reality, and to add more houses, they cannot, the road service cannot handle what we have. If there, I don't understand the interest in cramming more people. The people here are not happy. The people paying the taxes want to leave. Sorry, my heart's just pumping, because I'm passionate about it. It's a beautiful area. It's worth the reserving to keep those nice estate-sized lots, along with this development here. It took some getting used to, but you go to any really nice old neighborhoods, and, you know, it's a slow 25 mile an hour main road with beautiful homes and spaciousness. Is that what you're going for, or, you know, I don't, I don't want urban. I don't want to go to the city. You know, just need to know now, so I can sell while the selling's good.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Only once? Only twice? Anyone? All right, then, folks, I need a motion at 6:56 to close the public portion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver?
Support.
Support by Mr. Shudo. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Box, did you want to address some of the concerns?
Sure. I hope I get them all here. The first question was with regards to water, so rezoning has nothing to do with water and sewer connections. We're not going to require anybody to tap into the water or sewer system within the township. As far as do they have the ability to tap in, I think that's a question that could be asked of the Water and Sewer Department. That, again, it's not a zoning issue. I don't know if they can or how that process works. That's something that they would have to ask the Water and Sewer Department. With regard to the parcel splits, so, again, we're not asking anybody or telling anybody to split their properties. They can continue living as is. I do understand the concern that should, you know, a property owner see dollar signs, as they say, and want to split this, these are already pretty long and narrow properties, and within our ordinance, a property can't be more than three times longer than it is wide. It would be very difficult. I'm not going to say it's impossible, but it would be very difficult to split one of these parcels and get additional density. Even though the ordinance allows more density, they still have to follow all the ordinances, and it would be very difficult to split, I think, a lot of these parcels to put more homes on there. And even if they were, if one of them was, in fact, wide enough that they could split, they still, again, have to follow the ordinances. They have to have enough road frontage. I think it would be difficult to split it more than one time, even if they could split it at all. So, again, I'm not going to say it's impossible that someone could split it, but it would be very difficult based on the size and shape of these properties as they are right now.
Okay. Is there any interest in developing any of these properties at this time?
No, we have not seen any plans of anybody seeking development.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, anything else to add before we go for a motion?
Yes. Thank you.
The last question.
I'm sorry?
The last question.
You said anybody interested in developing the current subdivision that's behind there when they built it without...
She's got to go up to them.
Okay, go to the podium, please, so we can get you on record.
Do I have to state my name again?
No.
No, you're good.
The subdivision that's developed behind us, they planned for the future, well, they already told us straight up, you're not going to live forever, when they dead-end streets to the back of our property. No curbs, just, we're just waiting for you to die, and we're going to mow you over. They tried buying our properties before, just, oh, can we just take your back half? We'll give you some change for it. We'll give you some change for it. All your neighbors sold to us. They lied. And I know, I, the same corporation still owns it. We've been in touch, but because I just wanted, you know, we had neighbors there ripping the woods out. And I'm like, wait a minute, they got a tax break for that. You're not supposed to touch that. It's protected. But anyway, that was, there is people interested in developing it. They're just waiting. They're in a subdivision behind us. That's what I wanted to add.
Thank you for the information.
That very well could be that, that, you know, a developer would like to. At this time, we have seen no plans. Nobody has submitted any, any plans for development. Uh, and, and in order to do so, they would have to own the property or have some type of legal contract, uh, an affidavit of ownership that the, whoever does own it is giving them permission to seek some type of development.
Okay. So nothing's passed your office yet?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Bentley?
Yes, um, Mr. Box, uh, there's one item that came, uh, that was identified. And I think Mrs. Watkins had indicated it. Um, regarding a sub that she's apparently in that may have requirements for minimum square footage of, of a home, uh, you know, prop- and then a size, minimum size of, of lot or property. Two acres, I think, was the minimum. So in trying to, uh, if, if they were allowed by this zoning change to R one, it, does it preclude, uh, or do they still have to follow the requirements of the sub being a minimum square footage for house? As well as a, a minimum lot size? They couldn't, uh, they couldn't go smaller than a two-acre lot to build anything on. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I don't know, um, what they're, if it's a master deed or a homeowners association, um, a deed restriction. They would have to continue to follow that. So this wouldn't change, uh, any of, of the language within that. And if, again, I haven't read their, any deed restrictions. But if that does in fact exist, that requires them to be the size that they are, then yes, that, that could still be enforced, that people could not subdivide their, their units.
Right. And then my second question was related to, um, the area that might be in back of her property that, uh, sounds like it's a wetland where there's, uh, special, um, considerations there. But a wetland is a wetland. And, uh, and that would have to be brought before, uh, this commission as well as Eagle and, and some other entities before you can touch that wetland. Um, it, a wetland is a wetland is a wetland. And.
Correct.
Um, it's very difficult to mitigate. You have to find another place, same size for it and plant and trans, uh, for all of that. Uh, so.
Yeah, there, there would be a, a number of steps that would have to be taken. And it, again, the mention of, uh, possible tax breaks for, for keeping it wetlands. That, to me, that, that sounds like a conservation easement, uh, which is typically in perpetuity. So it'll be a conservation easement forever. It's, it's very, very difficult to remove a conservation easement. Um, so that will continue to be that if, if that is in fact what it is.
I, I just wanted to clarify that this zoning change, um, if it were to change, shouldn't affect any of that. That is something that's handled by other entities. And it's difficult and they have to go through the approval processes. And you just stay vigilant on that. But it has nothing to do with the zoning.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Spatafora?
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, I guess this is going to be directed either to Mr. Skurdo or to Mr. Box. But, um, as it relates to the mass rezoning with the comments from, um, our resident that lived, our residents that live in section two, as it relates to the next agenda item, six C, the review dra- draft master plan, on page thirty-six, and I realize this is just a draft, it's not finalized, but in the northwest quarter of section two, the future land use was discussed and planned for like large estate parcels. It does include section two where public utilities are not widely available. And I guess as we're going through this master plan and this draft, was there ever given any thought, uh, in the mass rezoning that, that section two, and particularly if you take a look at the, uh, proposed future land use map for up there, the northern part, right up in here, that looked to be future land use plan for the zoning consistent with R one E. Whereas the southern portion of that, uh, it looked to be the, um, what we're here for, the mass rezoning, many of those parcels in that land for R one. Can you shed maybe a little bit of light on that? Uh, since obviously the township, that portion, you know, commensurate with equestrian farms, open space, trails, and matters along that line.
Sure.
Would there be any thought or consideration in either looking at that as more of the larger two dwelling units per acre as opposed to the mass three dwelling units per acre?
Sure. So again, uh, the R one E, um, can be, uh, the two units per acre. Uh, but I believe that the way the ordinance is written, that is, it's only two units per acre uh, when, um, it, it only gets smaller like that when public water and sewer is available. And I, and as he mentioned, I think up there, most of that property does not have one or both of those items. Um, and, and again, that, first of all, that's the two thousand eight master plan. Uh, I, I think, uh, the Cultivate McComb will potentially change that slightly. But again, uh, land use is different than zoning. Uh, and it's a future planned land use. As long as they continue to live there and choose to continue living there, it will continue, uh, with that same zoning. There's no requirement for them to rezone it to anything else. And for that matter, if they do in fact, uh, meet the requirements for R one E, they would have the ability to come in and, and seek that if they would like to.
Okay, I've just looked at a potential discrepancy with, again, a draft, I understand, of the future land use type, uh, legend with two dwelling units per acre. And I'm just talking about, again, the north, did I say northwest before? I meant the northeast corner, quarter, northeast quarter of section two. The northern part, that about's twenty-six mile.
Are you looking at page thirty-five?
I am.
I think that's actually the, the orange color you're looking at is the very bottom use in the list.
Or flex use. Well, I stand corrected then. I'm sorry, it looked like it was the top one. But you're right, I see the difference. Okay. And then per your comments before, they would have that capacity if they did want to come in with the two.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora. Anything else from the commissioners? And do we have a motion?
I have a follow-up question?
No, um, I'm sorry, but we're, we're done with the public portion. I'm sorry, but we're done with the public portion.
Do we have a motion? No motion?
Did they not answer one of his questions?
We're done. Okay. I'll make a motion that we grant the rezoning, mass rezoning, residential one family suburban, R one S, to residential one family R one pursuant to the planning consultant's recommendations. Okay.
I second that.
Motion by Mr. Shudo, seconded by Mr. Provinzano. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Provinzano?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley? Yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
He's excluded.
He's absent. Yep. And, uh, Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, good job. Next item, review draft master plan and recommendations for distribution to neighboring communities, McComb County util- McComb County Utilities and Railroads for Comments.
Mr. Box?
I'm actually going to let, uh, Mr. Skurdo, uh, talk about this one.
Mr. Skurdo?
Yeah, in front of you tonight, you have a draft master plan. Uh, we feel the draft is somewhere between eighty and ninety percent complete. There's still a little bit of work due on it. Uh, but this is a timeframe per state law where we can, we must send it out for distribution. Uh, we don't want to send out a hundred percent adopted plan. We want to send out a plan that they know we're going to take advisory comments on. The plan, uh, will actually go to the township board. It'll be a recommendation from this commission of the township board to send it out for distribution. Distribution will go to the, all the surrounding communities that touch our borders. It will go to McComb County. It'll probably go to Planning Economic Development as well as their planning commission. It'll go to SEMCOG. Um, it'll go to the railroads, you, all the utilities. Uh, there will be a, they have sixty-three days from the date the plan is sent out. They have sixty-three days to return any type of advisory comments to us. At that point, it comes back, uh, we'll have a draft master plan. At that point, the commission can continue to work on the master plan or else, or else it can start up and do the formal public hearing process and get through the adoption.
Okay. So basically, this is just mailing to the communities surrounding us? Okay. If commissioners have comments, do you want them to share them now? Or would you like them to be emailed to you later?
If there's some comments, I think the appropriate motion right now, if there's any comments you want us to do in the plan before it gets distribution, probably should be a recommendation to the township board to approve distribution, contingent on whatever comments you have, get incorporated into the plan.
Okay.
That'd be the appropriate motion. Then we would take it from there.
All right. So you need to hear from us if we have some comments. Okay. All right. Commissioners?
I have a question. Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Skurdo, um, if we, uh, if you're, i- if we approve the, uh, distribution, our recommendation to, uh, to approve the, uh, distribution uh, to the board, how long before you need our comments and to incorporate those comments? So what, what would be the, the drop dead date for our comments?
I, I think we would need is before we go to the township board, they would have to see what comments you're conditioning, the planned distribution. Because they're the ones at the end of the day that's going to tell us to go ahead and distribute. So we would hold off any township action until we had your comments. We wouldn't necessarily have to put them in the plan yet, but we would need your comments to include as part of the backup package.
So when you.
Support your motion.
When do you plan on bringing them to the township?
Josh, next Wednesday?
The, the goal is next Wednesday's board meeting. Uh, if you feel you need more time to review that, uh, we could hold off to the following board meeting to, to give you time to review it further and provide further comment. And, and again, I think Dave kind of touched on it. But as you saw and you looked through the plan, um, we've been working on it since it was sent to you on Friday and filled some more things in. We'll continue to do so up until, um, it gets in front of the board. And just because the board does authorize us to distribute doesn't mean the very next day we have to distribute. If there are still items that we want to clean up, um, before distributing, we can do so. Uh, we just wanted to get the timeline moving because we do know that sixty-three day period is out there. And, and, and I think we're, you know, everyone is eager to get this moving forward.
Actually, I got a portion up on my screen right now that I'm looking, already changing some of the language on to clean it up. So this is a moving, living document till the day we have adoption.
All right. Mr. Spatafora?
So, um, in follow-up to what you're indicating, Mr. Skurdo, it's about eighty to ninety percent done. Would the remaining ten to twenty percent include, um, at least in the draft copy that we have throughout that draft? It says like you insert an image related to a map or a concept, thing like that. Will the board see that actual image inserted at the appropriate pages?
In, I think in most cases, yes.
Most cases, yes.
Okay.
There are a few, uh, really detailed designs you want to put in as part of a subarea plan. We're not quite ready for that yet.
I think a lot of it, that's, that will be in the final draft and the final approved one will have a lot of maps in there that are not in this particular draft. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Bentley?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Another question. And I, uh, we, um, the comments that you had received during the open house, uh, is it your plan to have those, um, incorporated, uh, already before you take it to the, uh, to the board? Or are those things you'd be working on concurrently?
I think our preference is to working on those concurrently when this goes out for the sixty-three days. Uh, because like some of the, we'd like to share the comments with this commission during that sixty-three day period to walk through them to see what determines valid, what meets the master plan, if there are any adjustments to the master plan based on those comments. So I think it's a little premature to have it. I'd rather to have it get out than we can take in all these comments as a, as well as all the surrounding communities that offer us comments. And, uh, McComb County usually does a thorough, uh, look at the, uh, plan when they do their review.
And, and I would add too that, you know, we had a survey, I think most of you were able to attend. We had a survey. Uh, we also have that now online for those who couldn't attend. And rather than only have that online for a short window, uh, we're going to leave that open through October. So, uh, I think we, we want to wait until we get all of those comments before we start incorporating some because it's possible that the survey, you know, it may lean one way right now, but by the end of October, it may lean a different direction. So I, I think a lot, as you said, a lot of that will be concurrent. And, and as we're moving forward, those changes will be updated.
So, so as I understand it, the, um, the sixty-three days that they have to review, you know, all entities have to review, you'll be, um, um, making your own modifications based upon our comments and the, uh,
Correct.
surveys and such. And then, once those are, um, once you get your review comments back, then there's another, uh, you incorporate as necessary. And then is there another, uh, review period, um, to see the more final, um?
They'll be totally dependent on the, this planning commission. We will bring all comments back. We get all the comments from the reviewing agencies and things. We'll bring everything present to you, present the master plan and see if you want some more time to work on it before you hold the formal public hearing. So it's kind of in your wheelhouse at that point.
Thank you.
Gotcha. Okay. So the, um, recommendation is to approve or to recommend the, um, draft of the master plan and recommend distribution. Correct. So I'll make that motion then.
I'll support you.
My, I made the motion. Uh, Mr. Shudo supported it. And we need to call the roll.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Provinzano?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley? Yes.
Was it?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure I, I was clear. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Let's move on to old business. The planned unit development, general design plan, Maddox. Permanent parcel zero eight, three, six, three, five, three, zero, three, three. Zero eight, three, six, three, five, three, zero, two, three. Zero eight, three, six, three, five, three, zero, three, zero. And zero eight, three, six, three, five, three, zero, one, eight. Located on the north side of Hall Road and the, and east of North Avenue, section thirty-six. Carl Zimmerman, petitioner.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Um, so I, I think at this point, you guys are all familiar with Matic. Um, it, it's something that was, uh, first brought before you, I think, last summer for the concept plan. Uh, it, it's, it's a very difficult piece of property. I think we're, we're all aware of that. Uh, even as we've moved through it, I think it's become even more di- difficult than what we, we thought it would be. Uh, I, I'm sure, and I know the, the petitioners are here. Uh, I'm sure there were times where they were very frustrated. There were times we were frustrated. But I, I think we're, we're getting to a very good spot where, where everybody is comfortable. Uh, and, and in the end, I, I think it'll, it'll be a good thing that we took the time to make sure we got it right. Uh, so that being said, uh, just walking through the P U D process, as I mentioned, it came before you in, in June of twenty twenty for the concept review today. Uh, today is the general design, uh, plan. You, you have, all have that in your packet as well as the PUD agreement. Uh, and then beyond that, the individual, uh, units will, will need to come in with, with their final site plan for those units. So the plan you see here i- is the layout of, of the units. Uh, and again, uh, we worked hand in hand with these guys. Um, it was, uh, it took a while to get us there, but we, I think we got again to somewhere that everybody is comfortable. Um, we feel confident that, uh, it meets the ordinance. We feel confident that it can be developed, uh, you know, a- as you saw on the aerial, and I mentioned, it's difficult. It's, it's behind some other properties. It's kinda behind some houses. It fronts on two major roadways, uh, it, and also connects to some other adjacent businesses. Uh, so again, it was very difficult. Uh, we got to this point. I think everybody at this point i- is very happy with where we're at, at least I hope so. So here, here is the layout of the units. Uh, and as you saw probably in, in your PUD agreement, there's some language in there about some, some options. Uh, again, here's kind of the, their general design plan. There's some options about what can happen within each of those units. Uh, if you recall from, um, the, the concept plan, uh, at that time, they were proposing a restaurant, uh, fronting on North Avenue, and I think that's still an option here. Uh, right now, they're showing it, uh, as possibly two units, but it could also operate as, as just the restaurant. I mentioned that, you know, each of these items, I have to come back with their final site plan for each one. So, you know, that's when we'll make sure that whatever use they proposed at that time, it has enough parking and, and meets the, you know, the, the right widths of aisleways and, and all of those things that we would typically look for. So that being said, I, I think you have, have the PUD agreement was sent to you late Friday. Uh, hopefully you had a chance to look through that. I know Mr. Aloya and, and the attorney for the petitioner have spent a long time working on that, getting all the i's dotted and t's crossed. And I, I think Mr. Tomlinson is here tonight has had a chance to look through it. Um, and, and we're comfortable with it at this point. Uh, and, and we're recommending approval for the general design plan at this time.
Okay, thank you. Petitioners, would you please come up to the, the desk there? Again, please state your name and address for us.
Chamberly, Studio Detroit Architects, twenty forty Park Avenue, Suite two hundred, Detroit.
Okay.
David Everhard, attorney for the petitioner. Four five thousand River Ridge Drive, Clinton Township, Michigan.
Okay, thank you. All right, did you guys have anything else you wanted to add?
Well, as, as the planner said, this is, this is a difficult, um, piece of property. Um, the PUDs, uh, PUD agreement, plan unit developments were created exactly for this situation. Because, uh, the property, uh, surrounds other current existing buildings and the PUD, the PUD is supposed to be flexible. Um, and so it's not, um, current zoning and traditional zoning would not, uh, make this property usable, uh, for the community, for the benefit of everyone. So we've been proposed here a, a PUD, um, that, um, will take advantage of the surrounding, uh, basically businesses. Um, Maddox has a, a dealership, um, right next door. Um, there's four different units proposed here that will complement that business. Um, and so again, um, the reason that PUDs have been developed over time is for this exact reason, that we have flexibility given here. And, um, I, without the plan up there, uh, specific questions, um, we can get into more detail. But, uh, the point is that, uh, the plan unit development here, um, is, is exactly, um, what we're asking for approval and, um, that, that's it, really.
Okay.
I would like to add that, you know, we've been at this for a little over a year and a half and trying to get through and just making sure that things are in order. So a lot of thought and effort and time has gone into this. And, you know, even through the given current, you know, coronavirus pandemic, the flexibility is pretty important and a key aspect of how do we make uses of this entire collection of parcels, you know, to everyone's benefit? And I think, you know, working with the planners and attorneys, I think we're there, so.
Okay, Mr. Zimmerman, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I'd just add that I'm grateful for the township and their efforts to, uh, work with us. And as the gentleman have said and everybody's acknowledged, it's very com- complicated. This was not something I was seeking to do. I probably have addressed this at some point or another. The property owners had approached us. We really had no need for it, but, uh, through Shane's help, we kinda came up with some ideas for how to make this work and, uh, a lot of different moving parts, a lot of different, uh, participants in this whole process and, uh, grateful that we're at this spot now, so. Thanks for your patience.
Okay, commissioners?
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes, um, I wish Mr. Aloya was here, but I will ask Mr. Tomlinson. Um, uh, do you know if, uh, the township, uh, is satisfied with the PUD agreement? You know, as far as, uh, you know, the final work product? I don't know if Mr., uh, if Mr. Aloya spoke with you about that and he's satisfied. I'm sure you worked very hard with Mr. Everhard, you know, to complete it.
We, Ben and I spoke at length regarding the PUD agreement. Uh, I, cause I too had an opportunity to review it, uh, in preparation for tonight's meeting, of course. Uh, so I did have some questions as well, and I, and I know, well, one of the commissioners had some questions that Ben had addressed. Um, and yes, the township is in a position that we're happy or satisfied with what we've been able to reach and accomplish. There has been give and take on both sides, suffice to say. And, uh, I think the township feels adequately protected under the agreement. I think the petitioner is adequately protected, and I think both sides. Uh, there was a lot of back and forth about certain uses, certain alternatives, certain, uh, development requirements such as condoization versus split parcels and things of that nature. And, uh, I think, uh, there's been a meeting of the minds and agreement between the parties and the, the township is satisfied with the agreement as presented.
Okay, so this draft that's before us here, this, um, we'll call it, I guess it's the final work product draft is what will be presented or recommended to be presented if this planning commission should favorably recommend it to the township board for, uh, full execution?
That is correct, subject to a couple of typographical errors that we will fix. Uh, some spelling errors with, uh, Supervisor Vivianal's name as well as, uh, uh, convey versus co- Covey, so to say. So there's a minor spelling errors, but other than that, it's in its final form.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, just intent. Um, uh, and I, we, I spoke briefly to our, our planning, um, director, uh, but I just need to understand, uh, and, and wanna get your intake. Up to this point, and we, we've bet at this, uh, for a while. Um, but up until this point, until I read the PUD and then saw the latest drawing, there's, there's now been other facilities that have been in the mix as alternatives, uh, and they're stated in the PUD agreement. But no clarification, uh, other than, uh, they are alternatives, uh, such as the unit A being an office or, um, um, an office or a business, uh, commercial business. Nothing about, um, height restrictions or what it's gonna look like, uh, what it's doing to the neighboring, um, um, residences. Um, you know, seeing over the wall, uh, it being so close. And, uh, you know, it was one thing when it was a, that north section, uh, the northwest section of this, this whole complex, beauty complex. Um, that was a parking lot, proposed parking lot. And so, um, they weren't looking at a building, um, you know, over the wall. And I understand that you're looking for flexibility too, if, if something else doesn't work. So that, as well as a s- a storage building that was going to be a, a detailing, uh, building, now it's a, a, a storage building. I'm not sure, I believe it said two-story, uh, storage unit. Is that, uh, vehicle storage? And, um, you know, what, what kind of storage is that? What, what is that gonna look like? So I guess my main concern is we were presented with a restaurant, a car wash, a detailing, a facility, uh, future, and, uh, and then storage parking lot for, uh, Maddox, uh, which, which was, was great. And I'm, I'm for it, uh, was for it. Now this mix comes in, and I'm not sure what I'm approving. Am I approving the initial, um, restaurant? Uh, or, and, uh, as I mentioned, the, the initial, uh, facilities? Uh, or am I approving the possibilities of that plus any of the alternatives? And if I approve, I wanna have some assurance that the final is going to come before us because I wanna make sure that that's going to be, um, uh, it's, it's, it's gonna be something that, uh, that will work with some of the comments we heard for the public hearing when we first went through this. I don't want those things to be lost. Uh, and, uh, and, uh, so I want that information to, uh, to be retained. So, um, what is it that I'm, uh, I'm considering approval for? Uh, i- if it's this whole package, the PUD agreement, which states all the alternatives, then, and, and without any further detail as to what those, uh, future, uh, buildings were, because they're, they are not, um, detailed in any way. They are not even described in any way. I'd like to, I'd like to find out what the intent is. I'm sorry for going on, but.
If, if I could, uh, try to answer that for you, Mr. Bentley. Um, the, so as they mentioned, it, they're looking for flexibility. That's precisely what a, a PUD agreement is for, to provide some flexibility, uh, kinda some alternative uses, uh, i- in what might not typically be allowed there, but might fit the, the character of the, the surrounding area. Um, so for example, you, you mentioned unit A, uh, potentially being an office building. Were they to develop that as an office building, they would still have to come in with a site plan for that office building. At that time, you'd get to look at the height of the building, uh, and what the underlying zoning says it can be. Um, you know, parking requirements at that time, you would get to look at. So, uh, there, this is, you know, kind of a, a pre-step before you get to that. It's more approving the uses, what could go there. Um, and as you mentioned, the restaurant, uh, on North Avenue. And I, I think when we looked at that previously, uh, a restaurant requires more parking. So if they do choose a restaurant for unit B, it's likely that unit A does continue to be the parking lot option because they would need enough parking in order to fit the restaurant there. Uh, so each individual unit will come in with their site plans. Uh, and, and that's the time when you get to see the much more detailed plans of what's there. Uh, this is more, um, giving them some flexibility with use. Uh, I think, uh, one of the things we've definitely learned with, with the pandemic is that, uh, what's demanded by the public is constantly shifting. Uh, I think there was a time in the township when people thought that we wouldn't need any more industrial property, and now we're running out of industrial property. Uh, there was a time when commercial property was booming, uh, and, and right now, it's, it's difficult to probably start a restaurant because people have fears of, of going into the public. So this is just giving them some flexibility with what may or may not be developed there. Uh, without being too broad, they are limiting it to certain, you know, certain uses, like an indoor storage or an office building, things like that.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Mr. Bentley, if it helps, I'm gonna, section ten point two four zero zero B three does state all requirements of the underlying zoning district, which be an office or commercial, whatever, including but not limited to setbacks, uses, density, area, regulations shall be met by the proposed PUD unless specifically waived by the planning commission and township board. So I think that speaks to your, you don't know what the height are, what it is, but they do have to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance right now.
My concern was that the PUD, in the PUD agreement, it indicates that, um, that if there are any differences in the zoning ordinance or whatever, uh, to the PUD agreement, the PUD agreement takes precedence. And if the PUD agreement doesn't have specifically, uh, the height restrictions or, you know, uh, various other requirements, um, it does indicate in, in various areas, you know, that it needs to meet our zoning ordinances, it means, needs to meet our building. But the one paragraph, um, um, indicates, uh, I think it's paragraph on page five, uh, paragraph seven regarding the control, uh, that this PUD takes control. So when I'm reviewing in the future, if I do, a, a office building in, uh, unit A, I don't have any requirements in the PUD that tells me what those, what to follow other than going back to the zoning ordinance. And I guess, I'm hoping that there's nothing in that PUD that I missed that would preclude them or anyone from following, any subsequent owners from following our zoning ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just, uh, chime in briefly. So this paragraph seven, and I, and I did review it earlier. Uh, basically what it says is if the PUD had a specific waiver of some type of zoning requirement within the actual agreement, that the agreement would take precedent. If there's not a specific provision for that, such as increasing the height or allowing a greater increase in the height in the PUD agreement, then it defaults back to the zoning ordinance, and you're required to s- to submit and follow the zoning ordinance. So this is just to clarify that if the PUD has a specific provision that otherwise may or should have been addressed in the zoning ordinance, uh, and was waived by the PUD agreement, the PUD agreement takes precedent. If not, we default back to the zoning ordinance for our requirements and regulations.
Okay, and, and if I take that just one point further, if the restaurant, as I believe was two-story, uh, at least at one point, um, could that be used as a point of reference for parcel A's facility? That it could also be two-story when maybe zoning ordinance, and I'm not sure, on zoning ordinance doesn't allow it to be two-story? Uh, which would take precedence?
Well, if it's in the P, if it's in this agreement, all other agreements are off the table. You, you can erase those from, from, from the whole repertoire. It's this agreement only that governs. So unless this says two-story restaurant, which I don't believe it does, unless I missed it somewhere.
No, but it was on our, on the earlier drawings that we had received.
Okay, well, the earlier drawings are completely out the window.
So you're saying all the drawings that we've received up to date are out? And only this plan, these plans are the only things that we have, uh, that describe the facilities?
That's correct.
Whoa.
Yeah, what was presented to you previously is no longer on the table. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, on that, but that's my understanding.
That's correct. That was some of the give and take and the compromises that have been made. Um, we're, we're, we have to comply with the zoning code, with the building codes. We gotta come back with final site plan approval. Um, but as the planner said, you know, with COVID and that, we need the flexibility to see what kinda stakeholders, if our current stakeholders will still continue. We think they will, but you never know six months from now whether or not they change their mind. So again, that was kinda the, the give and take and the compromise that was built in, into the agreement. Uh, we strictly have to comply, uh, except for anything that's specifically referenced in here. So to the extent that there was a two-story restaurant building, right?
Well, I think, yeah, all that's said is correct. We do still have an intention to build the two-story restaurant consistent with the designs you've seen. We are closer now to an agreement with that restaurant proprietor than ever. Over the course of the past eight- Um, over the course of the past eighteen, eighteen months with COVID, that has really been in flux. But, um, things seem to be on path right now, but we need the flexibility in case they don't.
I understand.
Come to you with an alternative use.
I understand. Then the, the car wash, we, we had received because that was initially going to be the first. Uh, so we had elevations, we'd commented on, on certain things. Um, and, and now then, this site plan, we are gonna be reviewing. Uh, but we'll, from what I'm understanding now, we will receive another site plan with elevations of the buildings for Phase One and, and such. And then as the future phases come in, we'll see facilities, uh, elevations, uh, more detailed site, uh, plans for those facilities.
Correct. You'll, you'll see all of that, uh, and I, I believe you'll probably see it at your next Planning Commission meeting already for, for Phase One A and One B for the overall site itself, the, the drive, uh, the roadways, if you will, uh, and, and the car wash. Uh, and, and just to, to go back to, you know, the, the flexibility and the uses that they're, they're building in here, this was not, um, them just giving us a wish list of all the things that they wanted that could or could not go there. Uh, this, as they said, this was a compromise. It was back and forth. There were certain things that they asked for and we felt didn't fit well there, and we, we told them no. So we're in, in agreement, uh, with these uses that they're proposing.
Okay, understand. Uh, then I only have one other comment, if you may, or if I may. Um, uh, it, with this new layout, um, I foresee that, um, people are not going to be able to make a left-hand turn onto North Avenue, uh, because of the traffic we're already seeing. Uh, even if that changes, it might be difficult. It'll be easier for them to go north and turn around someplace and come back. Uh, they may learn after a while, going to the restaurant or the car wash or whatever, that they may want to exit, um, out the car wash drive or entrance drive. Um, I believe there's an exit there too, but can they exit, uh, I don't have the directional signs here, but can they, uh, exit out that drive that is east of the car wash out onto, um, Hall Road?
Yes.
So if they can do that and they can also then probably go into the, uh, uh, restaurant, the, uh, the existing restaurant, uh, that's there now and go out that exit as well?
Yes.
Okay. And, and then I see that the, the supplemental parking areas for the restaurant, the office building, supposedly maybe workers for the car wash, uh, and maybe this other storage facility or detailing facility, whatever. A lot of that, or some of that's, uh, parking to meet the requirements is, is over in the, uh, Matic storage, uh, or car, uh, lot, basically, on that, uh, west end, uh, so noted by, um, some hatchwork, uh, on the plan. That you don't see here, but it's on our plan. Um, and it says, uh, you know, parking for the offices for the restaurant and such. Uh, so, so pedestrian traffic, and I see that we have one sidewalk, but we've got a lot of crossing over and traffic, uh, going through that. So it's a circuitous route to get back to, uh, or get to their car or, um, I think it was mentioned that that might be just for valet. I don't know. Um, but, uh, I think that's a consideration that you need to make, uh, as you, uh, present some of these final plans. And, uh, that's all I, I have. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Box, we're just doing the general design plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay, from this point, if, um, let's just say A.
We're working on A.
How many steps is it that they have to go through before the township gives them approval?
Well, they would, they would come back. So for example, the car wash, they would come back with the final site plan with the car wash. Uh, assuming that that gets approved, they then work through engineering. Uh, and, and then they will be able to construct at that, at that point. Unless through the engineering process, um, there's some changes that, you know, that are, need to be made to, in order to make the, the engineering work, and it causes some changes to the layout of the site plan, they may need to come back to Planning Commission with a revised final site plan. Uh, but again, that would be dependent on what happens in the engineering phase.
Yeah, so basically everything is not a done deal today?
No, absolutely not.
General design plan?
Sure.
There's lots of steps, and you guys know that, that they have to go through before they can start building, whatever phase it is.
Yes, they're not gonna be out there with shovels tomorrow.
No, no. It's supposed to rain anyway, so you don't wanna do that. Okay, that's all I have. I wanted to share that with the community. I wanted to make sure, you know, not that anybody's here, but, I know, you noticed. Um, but if they're viewing this later, I want them to know that, you know, the, the parking and going North Avenue and coming out Hall Road and all that stuff will be revisited before shovel hits the dirt.
Correct.
Okay, good. All right, do we have, oh, I need to open this. There's nobody here in the public, and I'm doing this for the video, but I think I'll officially open and then officially close, unless Mr. Van Tiflin has anything he'd like to share. Okay. So it is 7:46, and I would like to open this, um, this item, the Matic's general design plan to the public. Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mr. Spatafora. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak? The answer is no. There's nobody in the audience. So at 7:47, I'd like to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Supported, or moved by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, did I do the aye for the opening?
No.
No? Okay, let's back up. The opening, all in favor?
Aye.
We're closing it?
Aye.
Aye, we're good. Okay. Do we have a motion for this, commissioners, this item?
Mr. Chairman, based on, uh, the comments from our planning department, um, and, uh, the answering of the questions by, uh, the petitioner and representatives, comments from, um, Mr. Tomlinson, our attorney this evening, and for the purpose of while we're here at this particular point, reviewing the general design plan, uh, I will make a motion to, uh, recommend approval of the general, uh, design plan, uh, from Matic Chevrolet. I'm sorry, uh, for Matic and this planned unit development, um, as is, uh, presented. Permanent parcels 08-36-353-033, 0836353023, 0836353030, and 0836353018.
Okay, motion by Mr. Spatafora.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Bentley. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Provazano?
Yes.
What was that?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Welcome to McComb Township.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Okay, public comments? There is nobody in the audience but Mr. Van Tiflin, so we'll just kinda waive that. Commissioners' comments. Do we have anybody that would like to share anything at this time?
Yeah, I have a few. I'd like to, uh, comment on, uh, our new public safety building. What a beautiful building, and I watched, uh, ribbon cutting on TV, and it was interesting to see. We had a young lady from our township singing the National Anthem. It brought back memories of my daughter singing the National Anthem at Tiger Stadium, and it was great. Chrissy's daughter did a good job. Our library is phenomenal. I think that once people get in there and look at it, it's gonna bring a lot of people down to find out we have a rec center, we have a beautiful, uh, town hall, and, and, and what a diamond and rough our township has there. And I just wanna ask Charlie or Josh or, or Dave, two things, an update on the dog park and maybe the pickleball courts with our, was it Pickford Park? Is it?
Pitchford.
Pitchford. Pitchford. Cause I know a lot of people live, uh, this, this is one thing we started years ago, and I'm, I'm glad to see this closer than ended and, than the beginning. So if you had an update, and I was just wondering.
Um, nothing really new to update. I, I think you guys have approved the, uh, the site plan for the park, so, um, I think it's going through the appropriate process to work its way towards development.
And one more thing, I've been into a lot of communities and, uh, up north, I notice that, uh, a lot of townships and cities are putting electric charging stations in. I don't know if there's given money away to put those in, but I think that's something we need to look to. Cause a little town of Deccerville has three charging stations in there, and I know that they're not putting money up. If there's money available through the government, I think we should try to grasp it. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Okay, anyone else?
Just very quickly, I guess that begs the question, does the township have like a, maybe this was, uh, discussed before my time on the commission, but does the township have a full-time grant writer, you know, to pursue, uh, federal and state?
Uh, we, we have a, a third-party grant writer that we have hired. Yes.
Anyone else?
I will comment on the, uh, public safety building. I like the new sign.
I do too.
A whole lot better than the old sign. So, my compliments to the Board of Trustees, Mr. Oliver.
Which sign? For which building?
The public safety building.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
I, I did have, uh, one question, um, and it's regarding our, um, our minutes. Um, I'm not sure, uh, what the response was, but, uh, um, I know that, uh, when, when we were given instructions about giving our motions, um, that we, uh, were asked to make sure that we have, uh, something specific like, uh, per the recommendations of the Planning Commission or per, you know, what other, um, uh, consultants, uh, information that we might have. And, uh, and that was the basis of our making a motion for recommendation or approval. Um, and with the current, um, minutes, uh, format, um, all of that has been dropped, and basically all they have is, um, uh, you know, who made the motion, who seconded it, and then, um, what the tally was for, uh, approval and not. Um, the same would be said for, uh, as an example, um, uh, petitioners that weren't ready with all the material, and we had to cancel, uh, or postpone. Uh, and nothing is in the records as to why we postponed, uh, even if it's, uh, minimal, you know, they're just not ready with it, so that there's something to go back to. I know they can go back to the video or, um, uh, the audio records. Um, is that now a not, not a requirement? I think Mr. Ew, um, Ben was going to check whether or not the trustees, uh, were going to do that with their minutes or not, and we were trying to be consistent with them. So I, I never found out what the response was.
Yeah, I, I think that was the intent, was for, uh, both Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, the, the meeting minutes for both of those were, you know, getting very lengthy, uh, and, and the idea was to be consistent with the board, where only the motion, uh, is listed and, and who voted which way based on the motion. Uh, I don't think that they're putting, uh, what you're asking about, the why the motion was made. Um, a- and I haven't talked to Ben about that, but we can find out if that, if it's a requirement, we can obviously put that back in there. I think the intent was that the recording is the supplement to the meeting minutes. Uh, so if somebody wanted to see why, they can go back and, and listen to the recording. Uh, but if it is a requirement, uh, I, we can certainly confirm that and, and start putting that in there if it is.
Yeah, I think the only reason it was brought up is because I think it was, our attorney had indicated we needed to add it and be clar- you know, clarify it when we do make our motions, and now it's not. So I didn't know, uh, whether that was a legal issue or, or not. So, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, moving on, let's go to the McComb Township Board of Trustees liaison, Mr. Charles Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I don't have too much report on B O T tonight, so I'll make it short. I just wanna comment on our ColleVate in McComb that we had. Um, I thought it was pretty successful. A lot of people come. A lot of people were really interested on what we were doing. Uh, there was developers there, there was residents there, uh, some board members come, and, uh, a lot of effort put on by our own, uh, planners and engineer, and everyone involved, so I just wanna thank them. And, uh, job well done. That's about it tonight.
Okay. Uh, Z B A liaison is Mr. Tuckfield, and he is not present tonight. Uh, planning department items.
Um, the other thing I would add, uh, is, uh, the following meeting, the, I believe it's October 19th is the next meeting for this. Um, I will not be here that evening, so Mr. Skurdo will be taking over that night, and I think Melissa may well be here as well. Um, at this time, it's looking like, uh, just a couple items. I think the, the next phase of the rezone, the R1S rezoning, uh, uh, possibly, um, one or two of the site plans from Matic, and I think I'm forgetting something else. But, uh, there, there will be a meeting, uh, and, and Dave will be here to, to lead that, so.
Okay. I had mentioned I was going to...
Yeah, we got you under...
Okay. I do have a question.
All right.
I do have a question for, uh, planning department. Um, uh, there was, there was a, a statement or an issue with, um, the, uh, the submittal that we received, uh, for the packets. And that, in that, the information that we receive is not to be disseminated. Um, uh, and, uh, that it was more restrictive than, uh, what usually the trustees, uh, would receive. But for Z B A and for the Planning Commission, uh, those items, uh, those plans, uh, what have you, are not to be disseminated, not to be, uh, uh, shown to anyone. That if someone is, uh, desirous of seeing them, they can file, uh, um, FOIA, um, request. Um, question, uh, uh, I guess I had is, uh, is, is it a requirement of FOIA? If, I mean, if it, if it is a FOIA requirement, does that mean it can't be disseminated? Are, are, are the same documents that are given to the trustees, uh, under that FOIA, uh, control as well? And, um, and, uh, do they have the same restrictions that they can't be shown to anyone? Uh, without applying for, um, uh, an application?
Sure, I, I, and I guess I would defer to, to legal counsel to, to fully answer that, but I think my understanding is that, uh, there is a requirement at the board level, uh, to make that publicly available, the, the packet itself. That's why it's posted on the township website a- as well as sent out to the, the board itself. Um, whereas with Planning Commission and Z B A, I don't think that requirement exists. So it's not required to be posted publicly. All of it is information that can be obtained by coming into the, the counter here at, at Town Hall or, uh, received through the FOIA process. Um, so it, it's not a requirement to send that out to the public.
So it's not a requirement, but is it, uh, in absence of that, uh, can it be?
Can it be disseminated?
Can it be dis- disseminated?
Correct.
Or is it restricted from being, uh, without a requirement?
I will defer to, to legal on that. I, I, again, I think it, it can be disseminated. I think there was, uh, some discussions internally, and, and what we were seeing is there was a lot of, uh, folks getting information secondhand or thirdhand and, and not understanding what that information was and misinterpreting it. Uh, and, and to avoid that confusion, we would rather have individuals come to the township so we can explain what those documents are, rather than let them, uh, try to interpret it on their own and, and, you know, create conflicts and show up, uh, you know, in meetings with complaints that are, are really not complaints, but they just didn't understand the document that they had in their hand.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, so, uh, as, as Josh indicated, uh, can it be? Yes, it can be, but I think internally and administratively, a decision has been made because you're, you, you're usually the, the first body looking at pl-... because you're you're usually the the first body looking at plans and and submissions to the township. And often, those change significantly. And today's a perfect example. Matic, you had a plan months ago, a year ago, that is different than what's been presented today. So in the interim, until you really start getting to the final discussion phases, and this board's in a position to make a recommendation to the board based upon a complete plan being provided to the Board of Trustees, as a matter of of administration, the decision is to not have those items go out before they should, unless someone comes in and they want to make a FOIA. Can they absolutely get a copy of those documents ahead of time? Sure, under FOIA, we have a responsibility to turn those over. The reason that the Board of Trustees is published more in your documents and recommendations are are included in the packet, is it because it's nearly, if not, in its final form? Can there still be changes? Sure, your recommending body, the Township Board, may have some disagreements. But for the most part, ninety-nine percent of it is completed, goes to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees is elected to have their agenda and the backup materials included on the website for dissemination, basically, in in large part with the with the with the developments and with the the plans being primarily in their final form. And there's less risk of misinformation getting out there, which, as you've seen, has occurred probably before this board in many instances where people come to the podium stating, you're allowing this to happen, you're allowing that to happen, when in reality, that's not what that's not what is happening. And there's a a lack of understanding. So that's why we have requested, we have asked for the board to refrain from disseminating any information that may have been provided to you until the entire board as a whole has had a chance to really look at it, delve into it, and and come to some conclusions and recommending to the the Township Board of Trustees. So that's kind of what's behind that whole theory.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, next item on our list is motion to adjourn. And I'll make that motion. Anybody support?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Shudo. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.